Can you hear me too? Okay, great.
Agenda. You know I have it in here? I've got it in, in, in some place. Okay, June 25th, 2020, it is 7:15. I'll start with a call for order. And again, like we did last week, we're gonna have to do individuals. So if you would start in the corner, again.
Yes, Roger.
Rich Canong? And we have Marty and Susan joining us remotely.
Yes, Susan Rock. Marty?
Marty. Marty Kane.
We have approval of the agenda. On the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from May 28th, 2020. We have time for public comment. We have four pending applications. 35 DMR Drive, a Plenary Site Plan Review. Item number two is Regentate your Subdivision Amendment to Shoreland Zone Application. Item number three is Monique Paul Robitaille Subdivision Pre-Application. Item number four is Wellness Center, a Plenary Site Plan Review Determination of Completeness. On, under Land Use Ordinances. We have a discussion about a proposal to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways. And then we will stop and go home.
Make a motion when you approve the agenda. A second.
Motion was made by Tom and seconded by Roger. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Bergen, aye.
Roger.
Rich Canong, aye.
Tom McGinn, aye.
Susan?
Susan Rock, aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous. We have approval of the minutes from May 28th, 2020.
We will approve as written.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded to approve it as written. Any discussion? Hearing none? Those in favor?
Aye. Sorry.
Oh, okay. Roger? Okay. Canong, aye. Tom McGinn, aye. Susan?
Aye.
And Marty, you said aye?
Aye.
Thank you. There are five, five ayes and one abstention. Public comment. This is the time in which if you are a member of the public and you want to comment on something that is not on the agenda, you can bring it to us and you can start working on it.
Excuse me, it's Jeff Param.
Yes, sir.
Did you say? I, I'm sorry, I could just barely hear you. What did you just say? You said public comment?
This is for public comment if you do not have a comment about, if they're not on the agenda. If there's something that's on the agenda, I ask that you withhold your comments until we get to that point.
Okay.
Are there, is there any public comment? Hearing none, we will move on. Pending applications, item number one, 35 DMR Drive, a Plenary Site Plan Review. Determination of Completeness Proposal to Construct a 4,251-square-foot metal building, complementing an existing 3,440-square-foot commercial building on 2.83 acres site located at 35 DMR Drive, Tax Map 1, Lot 1D, in the BI District. Gary Martin is the owner and applicant, and Amy McNally is the applicant's agent. Amy, you're up. Yes, please. If you would take the, take the witness, yeah.
I suppose that's. Last meeting, the board had requested an updated plan. My name is Amy McNally, the application, we provided everything as a part of the application for determination of completeness.
The application is complete?
Yep, the only thing I have outstanding is I have Atlantic Resource Consultants, we, uh, we have discussed.
Okay.
Hopefully they'll have, well, of course I won't. Maybe Jay still hasn't found anything.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have that before the, the next meeting. Okay. Yeah. I hope. I would be very disappointed if you didn't want it.
So this general, we just spoke of determination of completeness and schedule of a public hearing. If board agrees with staff.
Were there any waivers that were requested that we need to look at?
Oh, two big waivers. There was, the only discussion that we had before was on the status of parking and whether and when the applicant needed to pave the parking lot. These were two more, two more spaces that were being created. And I'm just looking through the application right now. Only waivers that were, oh. Those were, did not apply. Was the planting schedule for landscape plans, uh, for planting. And traffic, you're getting impact study and groundwater study. And market analysis, which we don't ask for, and a fiscal impact analysis, which we don't ask for unless it's a significant project. There are no state or federal approvals that are required for this project. The only state, the only, um, a community applicant has had with state agencies was when he was exploring the possibility of using Route 1 as his primary ingress and entrance.
Yep.
Which did not meet driveway separation, I mean, the entrance separation DOT requires, and therefore is denied. Otherwise, the waivers would be for landscape plan. The applicant is now proposing cutting the vegetation out within the buffer along with the landmark or on Route 1. Labor of the traffic study, which staff would have come through with, and labor of the water study, staff would have.
Okay. So you, are you gonna, if I understand this correctly, there's, there's not gonna be any landscaping that you need to do?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
As long as they don't cut that buffer from.
That's correct, the buffer will, the site is for the buffer to be on the start.
Okay.
That's the key.
Does the planning, uh, dude, yeah, does the board have any questions that we need to address before we determine completeness?
I don't have any.
Roger?
I'm good.
Marty?
I'm good.
So I will move that way in this, uh, I think, the application complete. Motion was made by Tom McGinn and seconded by Yes, Bergen to jump to deem the application complete. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call.
Yes, Yes, Bergen, aye.
Rich Canong, aye.
Tom McGinn, aye.
Susan?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Your application is complete, we can move forward to a public hearing.
So I'll move that we, uh, schedule it to the next meeting.
Can we do that? Yeah, I mean, we have a public hearing. Yes, so. Do we?
We do have to have time that.
I have to have. Right.
Yeah.
It's two weeks, so.
We won't be able to do it till Monday.
10 days.
No, we have a different.
We, we, we owe them, but we're running into that call.
So seven, it's the last 14 days.
It is, yes.
And with the new digital format, I don't need three days like the used.
Right.
So. I, I could, I could put in Monday.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded?
I did, because the next meeting, why not?
July 11th, I believe? July 9th, okay. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Canong, aye.
Jen, aye.
Susan?
Yes, aye.
Marty?
Aye.
It is unanimous for July 11th. We will, don't go away. You set up on the agenda.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, Raymond Acres Subdivision Amendment to Shoreland Zone Application. Proposed amendment to alter the approved property lines between lots 503 and 503A on Tax Map 30, as well as a reduction in the 75-foot shoreland stream protection setback from Goff Millbrook Tributeary on Tax Map 30, Lot 503A, off of Black Dog Road in the R2 and S3 Districts. Nicholas Raymond is owner applicant, and Amy McNally is the applicant's agent. And I had. First, well, first off, does the board have anything? For the applicants? I know I did, but I, I need to find.
Well, I did. I also have a few points.
Okay.
Based on the staff notes I recently received.
Roger, your stuff?
I got them yesterday.
No, did you get mine? Did I get yours?
Wait, what?
Don't you give me your stuff?
Well, I didn't have time for about these ones this time, so. In typical course, I would, but that's.
Realize that was.
I do, right.
I had questions about some of the waivers that you were looking for. I just couldn't find where the list of waivers is.
Just, uh, tell them as built.
That's correct, there should be a contrast between as built and as planned on that minutes plan, which was newly submitted. Right, so there's one of each, so, and I can correct, I can kind of, a little bit of background. We had originally submitted the amendment to the subdivision plan, which is required to adjust one of the setback, well, setback to amend the subdivision plan, and then you went. Initially, there was some question as to whether or not this board had the authority to grant the buffer encroachment, which we have since determined at the May 28th meeting. There was a lot of conversation about it, but I think since then, it's been determined that this board does have the authority to do that. So that's what was transpired with May 28th, anyway. And then in June 11th, we had a lot of discussions about the circumstances, special and unique under section 8645 that we're citing. And so since then, we amended the plan to show the board what they saw, the sidewalk where the building is and where it was originally planned in the building envelope, and the shift that it inspired during construction. And so with, so at the tail end of last meeting, after the board had all this discussion about special and unique circumstances and the expectations and the deliberation, we were requested to file a shoreland application, which is a little bit more extensive than the original application that we filed. We did file that by the Monday deadline, as requested by the planner. And, and did include additional information like the updated plan and some additional information from our landscape architect to really outline the parameters as required in the application to discuss the environment impact, and that's all required as part of the application. So waivers included additional plan details that would otherwise typically be planned to be part of site plan review, stormwater drainage facilities, different details. We might ask that those be waived because given the circumstances and the picture that we're looking at of the exact encroachment, we thought that they, they would be, not necessarily relevant in the circumstance, given the window that we're looking at and the information that's been provided by our landscape architect to address the precise encroachment that the issue here, not necessarily this entire subdivision, which is what site plan review applications are meant to address. So we have requested several waivers to that effect. Other than that, what we haven't requested a waiver for, we have provided to the board based on the checklist. And so we are looking for a determination and a vote of completeness tonight. Again, this is our third meeting on this application. We've really tried to work expeditiously to get this together, and it's a really time-sensitive application for this applicant. So at this time, we are looking for the board to deem it complete. Of course, we would absolutely invite any feedback on our waiver request and take those under, obviously under consideration. But at this time, that's our request personally. Again, and we're happy to answer any questions or open discussion about those waivers. But we're really looking at the substance of the application and for termination of completeness, so that a public hearing can be scheduled, and that additional feedback from the board.
That's what I'm trying to find is the, is the waivers, there's a couple of waivers that.
Uh, we'll be on the second, section, section five. I'm sorry, I should put this here to that five.
Yeah. Gary Martin.
See, in, in the book I have, I don't have any of the waivers under section five.
It might be, is that the previous application, is that the first?
It might very well be.
So we submitted a newer application.
That's what it sent to digital.
Right.
So do you, would you like my copy of it first?
Let me see, I should have it in here. Subdivision, okay.
It, yeah. It says to Shoreland zoning application.
And we did receive the feedback from the staff yesterday on the waivers, but of course, that's too short of a turnaround. We get any additional information from the board, um, at this point. But again, for the complete, we're, we're actually happy, but for the completeness of the application, we think it's still right for a vote on that at this point.
Okay, I've got, I've got the waiver request. Okay, so the first one you asked us was the topographic survey showing the pre-existing and fill elevations at the outset. I'd like to know what they, what they're gonna look like afterward, and all of a sudden done, what's that?
And that's. No, that's okay, that's okay. And it's correct, because it will be changed. The fill was put in there, so the, she probably should get up to the house and do that. And that's precisely what Mr. Doe's plan, he has submitted, there's a preliminary plan in the application for landscape. That's exactly what that plan will consider. You can certainly speak on that, but his plan is going to be prospective in what this will, what this hillside will look like, what this, what this oak will look like in the future. That's precisely what we, what was meant by that, absolutely. So I think you're right, past this kind of, you know, what it did look like at one point is less relevant.
Yeah, because I'm, you know, I, I don't need a topo now of what it looks like, I need to know what. In, in particular, that section on the back corner, because there was a lot of disturbance.
And that's precisely.
Yeah, you moved, you moved the house 19 feet, but you've probably got another 19 or 20 feet worth of disturbance in the soil.
And we don't disagree, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's quite enough, going back down toward the stream, and that's what has me concerned, because between the change to the topography there and the runoff, because it's, it's bound to create an effect on runoff. I don't know.
And it's, it's precisely an issue that will be addressed with remedial landscaping and a plan to that effect. And in addition to landscaping, also gutter, dripage, those kind of water flow measures that are also part of the building plan, they'll be part of the plan.
But we don't have that yet.
Well, we have, we have a preliminary plan with a planting scheme and those kind of things. That's precisely what, you know, what we provided for in the application. That, of course, can be amended, can be backed from the board, but again, with regard to completeness of the application, we provided this board what has been asked for, but yeah.
Okay.
And that's what, again, that's what we're kind of, our goal is here tonight, and, but again, we certainly welcome that feedback from the board, and that's exactly what we hear.
And, and I will, I will concede the fact that asking for the waiver does make the application complete. It doesn't mean I can't grant a waiver, but it does mean that, that we have been provided with the information, and I just want to.
That's, and again, that's why we would certainly welcome that feedback. But again, for time and urgency, and hoping to get some momentum here for, for Mr. Raymond, we're hoping to get, you know, some public input soon, and maybe a determination of this board, sooner or later, under the circumstances.
Roger, do you have any questions?
No, we can sell the law.
Yeah, there's, there were 12 to 13 different waivers.
A lot of them kind of fall under the same umbrella, whether it's details on the plan. So essentially, it's lighting plan, building plan, stormwater report, waiver, fire chief and public works director, waiver of DEP permit, that's kind of part before the board, so DEP has to act to us, to get the shoreland zoning before we go back to them. And then the certain details of what the site plan is, what I was talking about before, about, you know, if you're looking at subdivision, details of that site plan are more comprehensive than details of an encroachment area that we're talking about here. So that's, that was the gist of our waiver, not to say you don't need a site plan, we of course need a site plan, but it doesn't need to encompass all of the details of the original subdivision, which is what we're just, kind of waiver.
Questions by the board? Marty, any questions?
I'm just trying to read the notes over here, but they were saying about a two-to-one ratio for disturbance under the planting or anything else.
I wish I could control the volume on other people, I can't control it on this one.
Am I too loud?
And, and I have.
Am I too loud?
No, that's good, Marty.
Nope, that's good. It's technology on my side that's messing it up. Okay, go ahead and repeat your question, Marty.
I was just looking on, like you said, the proposed, uh, um, plantings or anything else, since the pines are so big, but turn out it was saying that you have to use a two-to-one ratio for replacement, but what are we replacing it with?
Yeah, that's, that's what's really thin right now. We don't have a really clear idea how much, what's material, how much material we need. And we also, we're gonna discuss, we had discussed in the show whether or not we pull back some of that fill. Right now, there's no, no attempt to do that, whether it was gonna be a retaining wall or, and if I'm not mistaken, one of the things that you folks are concerned about is you don't want to go to the expense of the votes of that, being inclined to, uh, to.
Approve.
See, yeah, to approve this. But right now, it's very needless.
It, it is, but to Amy's point, we have enough information to make a decision. There's no guarantee that that's a favorable decision, but there's enough information to make.
You know, it could be subject to certain requirements.
So we can, we can say that, you know, I think, from that point, we can say that the application itself is complete.
And we're hearing this feedback, and we've read the staff notes, and we're conscious of that, and that's not lost on that, on us. And we understand that this is a substantive decision, and we certainly, again, we welcome that feedback from the board, but as far as a procedural question, I think that's just really the first point.
Yeah, we have to remember, it's, it's, it's just a determination of completeness. It doesn't mean that we're going along with it. You know, we just, we have all of the information necessary to decide one way or the other. And I think we do have enough information to make that decision. That's just my opinion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
So I move that we deem the application complete.
I'll second that.
Okay, Susan motioned and Marty seconded to deem the application complete. Is there any discussion by the board?
My only issue is.
I can't hear you, Tom, can you?
I'm sorry, the landscape plan is pretty, it's all vague, it doesn't, you know, it, there is some, let's, it's.
More details, and that goes to the staff notes point.
Yeah.
Sure. Understood. We can certainly, let's apply that in any, any approval or consideration, it can be subject to that, that's, we're open to that.
That's my only issue.
That's not lost on us, for sure.
Okay. Susan, any questions?
No, I'm good to call it complete.
Tom?
I'm all set.
Marty, come back now. Yes?
I can, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Canong, aye.
Aye.
Susan said yes. What about you, Marty?
He said aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Marty said aye? Okay, sorry, Marty, I didn't hear you. It is unanimous, the application is complete. The next step? Is to go to a public hearing.
Thank you.
Same page? July 9th?
It's been like four weeks in a row.
Well, a public hearing.
You guys aren't sick of me, huh?
We need to vote on it. Somebody make a motion.
Next meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded for a public hearing once a lifetime. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Bergen, aye.
Roger, aye.
Canong, aye.
Tom, aye.
Rock, aye.
Marty Kane, aye.
It is unanimous, we will see you next week. Yeah.
What I sent you? Yeah, no, I sent you digital.
Okay.
This is because I, yeah, because of what I got back. Just, I don't even wanna see this.
Okay. Pearl, come on back.
We're moving on, we're, we're dealing with just the shoreland zoning application right now.
Hello. Correct.
Just dealing with the shoreland zoning right now. Because the other one is immaterial until, unless this.
That's right.
Unless this works. Because if you can move the building. I was all moving on the setback, too.
Okay, next.
It's a king that kicks it into the, into the, the, uh, the opposite property.
The next item is Monique and Paul Robitaille Subdivision Pre-Application. A proposal to subdivide an existing combined residential, commercial facility into three residential units with associated parking and driveway on a 4.4 acre parcel tax map, 17 lot 14 located in 757 Merck Road in the Arlo District. Monique and Paul Robitaille are the owner applicants. Paul told me he was not going to be here. He did not realize that he had to be here. I told him that, that we would discuss the sidewalk that we had today and convey our thoughts to you, and that he could contact you to find out what we think.
I'll send him a letter.
Yep, and that would be fine. The biggest, I think the biggest issue, and I don't know how the rest of them felt, but the biggest issue I had is where's the road? He does not know where that road is, with, what the boundary points of that road are. He's not, he, he thought at first it might be the, the stake that is in the ground, but then he tried to say that the, the trees are in the center of the right-of-way. If the trees are in the center of the right-of-way, then the right-of-way runs through his neighbor's house. So I don't think that's quite the case.
We need to.
We, we need to have something definitive.
How do you get out of that sidewalk, uh, in time? I did, I was talking about the property just before. Just that brand G lane.
Yeah.
And you take a left.
Yeah.
It's a very, very narrow driveway going in.
Yes, it goes all the way back, he's gonna sign out there for snazzy cut, and that goes all the way back.
Why if I went in there and.
But. The road goes from there, it cuts across the property and goes out to Maplewood on the other side. Because he doesn't, he can't get a road.
It will come into the parking lot, what it is is, if you're standing in the parking lot, road to the door, just the direction from that facility. Um, it's that big field, that might, might see. Yeah, you don't see, it's just a big lawn that goes out there. A party property, and some trees up near Maplewood. And he's got a 50-foot right-of-way that's the original legal access into that property. But he also, he has a fee access that's a 20-foot right-of-way where the driveway that you went out is currently located. There's no way you can get an 18-inch, 20-foot road and a 20-foot, 20-foot wide access.
Right.
Because he's got drainage problems, and you know it's going through. I, I thought my, it was coming out of there to leave, but I thought, dude, last minute, I better slow down.
Yeah.
Because you can't see anything.
No.
Uh, on the other side of that.
He is. He is, he, he talked about trying to get in touch with the person that, at the end of the driveway, when you're facing Limerick Road on the right-hand side, that land belongs to somebody else and he, he wanted to see if he could get some, a bigger right of way from them, but he has not been able to get in touch with them. He can't get one from the property on the left-hand side, the lot that is for sale. Because if he does that, they're going to lose their frontage and they, they won't have enough frontage on the road to be able to build a house. Evidently, they must have 200 feet of frontage and that's it.
They must have.
Well, he would, he would rather not have to put in the road. Because the road's between 550 and 600 feet. It's 273 feet on the driveway. He'd rather be able to widen it out, but he hasn't been able to get anything accomplished.
And that's pretty much what, what stumbled in the last, when he was looking at putting an age restricted community was that he didn't want to deal with that road because it was a cost involved, but this is the only way he can do it. And the issue here, as my notes said, said to you previously, what had happened was that he's got the kennel, he's got his house, and he's also has a mother-in-law apartment attached into the house. And his issue is that mother-in-law apartment is allowed and is not considered a unit as long as it's within a single-family home. But as soon as you start dividing that single-family home into multiple units, that automatically loses its status as not a, not a unit. It automatically comes a unit. So his conversion of the kennel into a, into another unit now makes it legally a three unit. And so this is a multi-family project. Technically, we could call it a subdivision, but like, it, it is a subdivision by state standards. And the issue here really for him is to be able to provide adequate access out, safe and adequate access. And I think the board would agree as, this is experienced, the existing road just doesn't cut it.
No, no.
Especially the, now, he gets a lot of traffic there, I, I admit.
I don't know how that worked before.
It's, I, I've boarded my dog's that before and it's, it's a little hairy coming out.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so he, it's a, he recognizes that. So he's looking at putting in the road on that 50 foot right of way in order to do this. But the, the issue is that from staff standpoint, I would warn him that he probably does need to get an engineer. Because number one, he needs to find out where that road's actually going, because I don't think anybody really knows. And that's number one. And number two, if you notice, it's kind of in a bowl. I'm not sure where you're going to drain it, how are you going to drain it? If you're, certainly you can put, you can put your 50 foot, you can put your 24 foot road or your 12, 18 foot, I think, 18 or 16 foot road in there. But the biggest issue there is, how do you drain it?
Yeah. Well, he says it's wet anyway.
It's wet anyways.
The driveway where you are. He says it's wet.
And the, the issue isn't so much as the fact that it's wet, because of course you can fill and put enough granular material in there. The issue is where are you doing, going to do with the water? How does that drain? How are you going to have increased impervious surfaces results of that? Which is going to increase, of course, the amount of runoff that's going to be generated in a 25-foot storm. This board is responsible for knowing where that water is going to go. And right now, we don't have a clue because it's not a simple downhill. It's, it's a bowl. And so the question is, how are you going to get that water out of there within that 50 foot right of way? And that's where this board may just have to say what, you may need an engineer for this. Because this is, this is a multi-family project. This is not just a, a private way. This is a multi-family project.
I know that a couple of us mentioned that he should be checking with an engineer because he's got to make sure that the road gets built to town standards. You know, you need an engineer to figure that one out.
I think the financial scope and driving from the upside, there is that.
So that's what we came up with at, at the sidewalk. And that was just discussing the road and his getting it out.
Yeah. We didn't even consider once the road, or once at the end of the road. But then you have off of that road, that's the first and only where it is, which will require surveying. And I think an engineer is going to drain it.
Hey Pearl?
We're here.
Do you have comments?
Yeah, I, so I'm very familiar with the, the property. I've actually mowed that yard for my neighbor and I think she's trying to log in now, the collard property. And I'm very familiar with the lot that's for sale alongside of his existing driveway. So a couple of comments, I mean, common sense of it is, he's doing away with the business, it sounds like. And so he's going to have less traffic, no doubt. That's number one. Number two, somebody nailed it when they talked about the drainage, because it's a low-line area right now. And he's going to be investing as much money in excavation as he is the excavation of the road. I don't know if he realizes that. I don't even know if the pins are located. So when you said engineer, you're talking civil engineer? What, what were you talking, just engineer for the entire property or?
Nope, basically, civil engineer for the road.
Okay, is he, he, he's going to have, I don't even know if he realizes he's going to have a lot more, because right now, if he was to put that road, I guess you, is you calling a road or right of way or?
No, it's a driveway. It would be a driveway. It would be a driveway. It would be a driveway you need for a multi-family.
Right. That whole area, that whole entire area drains over alongside his current driveway. So that will still have, somehow the water's going to have to shed to the current area. You know, and he, he's going to be putting a lot of drain pipe in. He's going to have to change the, the way it drains a little bit here alongside. I mean, he's in for a big project. I don't even know if he realizes that. Because you'd have a lot of water backup onto the collard property. Because during heavy rains now, they get inches of water on, right on their lawn. They have to kind of wait before they mow it. So nothing would change there and he, it, it really would back up towards their driveway. So that's just food for thought. I don't know. And, and then he, there's a lot of services, I guess, have to be moved. CMP's already been out here for that. Which is going to be, I'll throw it out now. I know this may not be the time to talk about it, but he's actually disrupting a lot of homes out here and families that I'm not sure if it needs to be done. I, it sounds like it does. After listening to you, it sounds like the right thing to do is put the wide right of way versus his driveway, but the common sense side of it is, there's going to be a lot less traffic. If he's doing away with the business. Because I, I guess he's going to have three homes. Is that what we're talking about? A total of three homes? And I apologize, I couldn't hear, I couldn't hear one group talking very well. So there's, there's going to be three homes, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and right now, he's got two homes in a business? Is that? Okay.
Yeah, the, the trip generation will definitely go down. The, the ordinance requires more than that 12-foot driveway that he currently has.
Yeah. And understandable. It's just that it's, it's going to change a lot, a lot of things out here. Personally, it's, it's going to be an eyesore for me, because the lights are going to come right into my home, number one. Number two, they're going to be putting services right in front of my home versus where they are now. So that's my, my personal issue, but I guess he's talking about kind of walking in. I don't know if you know the property, I'm not sure the address, it, where Smitty used to be. I don't know if you're familiar with that area. I know folks have been around here a long time, but he's going to be walking in with four sides of pavement, that property. So I don't know how the drainage is going to be on his. And I, I don't know what his name is. I, I think it's Brian Houlay. He had some concerns, but we didn't, nobody got notification what was happening. I don't know if we were supposed to get something through the mail like we normally do. We didn't get anything for this, so we, we didn't know it was moving forward. So that's why we kind of jumped on tonight unexpectedly. But, so the collards have some issues naturally. So I, I don't know when the right time to talk about that or if it's tonight or when it goes to public.
Right. Yeah, this is, this is just a discussion of the sidewalk, about the planning board, lots from him going forward.
Right, but I can, I can tell you, there's going to be a lot of drainage issues for sure out there. Because it is, it is a wet area.
Could I, Jeff, sir, could I have your name, please?
It's Jeff Perham. P E R H A M. I'm at, I own the properties of 112 Maplewood and then 7, 8, 9 Limerick.
So Tad, I just want to clarify something. The buildings, the homes that he wants to build are actually townhomes. Is that right?
They will be more, they're connected multi-family, yeah.
Right, so they're not single-family homes, which is, I'm sure, I don't know what the zoning is there right now, but it's in contrast to all the single-family homes that are currently around it. Is that right?
Yeah.
On Maplewood.
Multi-family, you, you've got two applications occurring at the same time. We don't have a, a formal application. This is a pre-application. That's why the neighbors haven't been notified. But we have two things occurring. That, that's the only reason, Mr. Arum, is, is because
Okay, that makes sense.
And when we get a real app, that's when we notify, as soon as we get it, we notify all the neighbors.
Okay.
Right, I just wanted you to understand that these are not single-family homes, which is consistent with what is around there. These are
He's not putting up a new structure, right? He's just converting.
No, he's converting, he's converting the kennel into another unit.
Okay.
So since it's three, that makes it multi-family, three attached homes, that makes it a multi-family, which is permitted as additional use in the, in the, in the R1 district.
Right.
Have to meet all the conditions of the conditional use for that.
So I, yeah, I, I understand the rules. It's just that the common sense of it is, hey, we're going to, we're going to have less traffic and we're going to require, you know, a wider right of way. And I know, I understand, totally understand what the requirements are, but it, if you think about it, it just doesn't meet the common sense test.
Well, we had, we had talked a lot of times about this and I had encouraged him to try, for several years now, to try to talk to the neighbors to get just a couple more feet, just as an easement, as construction.
Yeah.
And I, I guess that didn't, that didn't pan out very well.
I don't know. So on one side of his, his current driveway, he's got a vacant lot. And on the other side, he's got a wooded area. So I, I don't know how much, you said he had, I, I heard 12-foot driveway. I'm not sure if that's what It's 12-foot driveway, but what does he have, 20-something feet right there or?
So what you can do is
Yeah, he does, he does have 20 feet.
Yeah, it's 20 feet. So he could put an easement in there.
Yeah.
Correct me if I'm wrong, is he could get a drainage easement, to put the drainage along the side, to expand it. Maybe even a construction easement that he could construct a little bit onto the neighbor's land and have an easement to maintain it. And that would probably work.
And, but in fairness to the applicant, he is not able to get in touch with whoever owns that land, the person he would have to talk to.
It's a little peculiar to me. Maybe the issue was that.
Well, I wasn't going to go down that road. But yeah.
The town must.
Yeah, I've been banging on the ice door.
And Tad, why can't he use Limerick Road?
It's Yes, it doesn't meet any standard we've got for
I mean, but if he redid that to make the entrance to the property?
If he could get an easement to use the property next to it, he would be able to, because he'd then have a wide enough area in which to put the requisite 16, 18-foot driveway.
If you put an 18-foot driveway in there, you just have to put the, the drainage on to the opposite, onto the neighbor's land. You can buy an easement for them just to run drainage down. There's only one stretch there that he really needs to get additional space on. And some of it, you can go on his land.
And then it wouldn't come off Maplewood, correct?
That's, that's correct. It would not
Seems a lot cleaner to me.
You can do it in a way that thrusts the location of most of the easement onto the people on the left as you're going out. Provided he swings back in before he gets following the Limerick Road. If you can get another small piece of easement triangular, people on the right, that would work too.
Can I throw a comment?
He's using to go this route right now. The planning board could tell him maybe that.
Yeah, Mr. Perham, you had a comment?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking, my thought is he, he may, whether he moves to a right of way versus the driveway he's got, he's still probably going to have to work that property. I don't know if he realizes that because of this drainage issue. You know, he's still going to have to probably, because now he's, he's going to increase the area of drainage and it's got to go somewhere. I, I, I don't think it's going to, he's going to be able to get it to come back to Maplewood, that water. And it's got to go alongside his current driveway, so he's going to have some, some investment over there. If, you know, even if he goes to a right of way. So he's going to be working, I, I, I'm thinking he's going to be working both the driveway and the right of way, and I'm not sure if he realizes that. Because he, he just can't
Again, that just goes back to the whole concept of how are you going to handle the runoff?
Right.
That's, that's why in a situation like this, that's why you need an engineer. I think it's kind of lost going in this situation. I also need a
To the chair.
No, I, I don't, I don't think we need
I think he needs to know that
To the chair.
Hang on, Jeff, Marty. Tom's speaking. I, I agree. We, we need to have an engineer set up on that and he needs to address the water flow, Richard, because it's going to be, it's going to be messy.
It will be.
And we don't want that.
But, but for, for our purposes tonight, I don't think we need a motion or anything. We just need to let the town planner know that he needs to, he, he's going to write him a letter and say, this is what showed up based on the sidewalk. This is what the planning board is going to be looking for.
Yeah. If it was a
Big alley and drive, it would be different.
So let's just have Tad do that since he's not here and address the issues and let him get the appropriate professional helping needs and we can revisit this. So yeah, sort of like moving right along.
Okay, on, on to bigger and better things.
Thank you for letting me join in.
Oh, you're quite welcome. Thank you for joining. The next item, the wellness center, planning, site, review, determination of completeness. What? I thought we were still in a pre-application on that one. What do I know?
A proposal we kind of are, but, well. I mean, they, they did submit a
They did submit a complete app?
Well, no, they submitted pretty much.
Pretty, okay, so we're in the pre-app stage then. Because if it's not, if it's not complete, then it's
Well, I think that we can discuss that in months.
Oh, we can, yes, definitely. But, but if it's, if it's not a complete application, then we don't want to determine it complete.
Well, let's just take it one step at a time. I think they did submit what they thought was an application that contained all relevant information. But I think that tonight, we have the time, we should go through what was submitted and what's left to make a complete application, so the applicant can know exactly what
Right. And, and what I'm saying is that we don't want to determine it complete tonight if we don't have everything that we need.
But, but
And, and talk about it more. The town planner shows that Well, the town, the town planner gets to make that decision. We turned it over to him and said, if it's a complete application, he can make that determination. If they want to come and talk to us about it, that's okay. And then we should discuss. This, this is a proposal to expand an existing parking lot serving two commercial structures by approximately 5,100 square feet. If 1,000 nine and 1,005 Portland Roads are 4.18 acre parcel tax map, 42 lots, 52 and 52A in the DB1 in the RP District, Elizabeth Loujane is the owner and applicant. Okay.
Yeah, I've got a pre-app form. That's what I have in front of me. Okay.
Well, if Yeah, let's, let's discuss that, that whole issue.
I can ask a question that is, you have 24 I have a question that, um, is you have 24 boards, parking lots, plus in-depth. Why do you think we have 24? I don't see a full, where's that based though?
Do you need 24?
Yeah, that's what we could fit.
Okay.
So, um, I was gonna add, we're adding another commercial space to it.
So you, you need some.
We're gonna need the extra parking service that front, because the building that we just redid, the zone business.
Yeah.
But it can be owned or occupied.
Yeah.
With an accessory as well, which is what it is, but the front section is.
All right, so, um, are you basing it on formulaic square footage or this is what?
Is it just, you hope to have as many? We're, we're maximizing out the space that we, that we could, uh, hey, in a way, it's, it's, I'm thinking the best use of it. Is you have a spot number 18, that's, that's really, to me, seems like only tricky one. Yeah, and you didn't need it, I think.
Yeah.
So I throw away, that's gonna be getting in the way. And it's not gonna affect anything?
Yeah.
You know, it's just, when it was drawn, that's what he thought we could.
Okay.
Right. All right, so Tom, what you would like to see is an inventory of, of uses and the parking and the number of parking spaces required for each one of those spaces. We have medical care facilities, which is one space for every three beds for every two employees on maximum shift. We have offices, medical and dental, which I think this really applies more to shifts. Because medical care facility sounds like that's for a, a, a care, in-house care facility. So I think that's what we used before, which was four spaces for each doctor, dentist, or other medical practitioner. And that's what we, that's what we balanced before.
Is that a minimum of fours?
That's a minimum of four.
Can I have more spaces?
Yeah, you can have four. Four spaces per practitioner, and that's, does the deal.
So forgive my ignorance, but what exactly does the Wellness Center do?
So, um, I am a chiropractor. I'm a chiropractor. We have a chiropractor office there. We have a yoga, um, a place that does small yoga classes there. And then we have a couple massage therapists in there.
Okay.
And we have a bowling, yep, a bowling room, where we have a bowling practitioner, which is another part of alternative care.
Okay.
Does each, each one of the practitioners have their own separate space or?
No, we're, we, uh, the chiropractic piece is the full-time piece. And all the other practitioners are part-time. So for instance, like yoga, he'll have classes two mornings a week for an hour, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and one 6:00 AM on Wednesday. And so, you know, that's when he's there. So people rotate in, but there's never, everybody's there full-time all the time.
On the, on the average day, how many people are there? The maximum, with anyone.
I would say, as far as practitioners go, I would say on a maximum day, you'd probably have four practitioners in the morning.
Okay.
Sixteen.
Sixteen parking spaces. And that's, that's for the Wellness Center in the back. You've also got people up front, correct?
No.
No.
So.
Well, yeah, that's right, because nobody's in the building right now.
We occupy the building up front. So we're one place. We're with the free car garage, the gray building. That is our residence currently.
Right, upstairs, but on the first floor, there's nobody in there?
No, but above that first floor, so on the first floor in the front of the house, that new, like, the front of the house, that's empty right now. That is a commercial space. And above that is a, an apartment, and that is occupied with one individual. And she's the one that parks on the river side. I don't know if you guys know her.
Yes, we do. And, and the commercial space up front is going to be for one practitioner?
I don't, I haven't even, I have not even marketed that place.
Okay, I was looking at it. It looks like a pretty good space.
Doing here, as far as what we're, what we're gonna be doing here before I, people have asked, and like, I'm not even showing it until I know what's going on here.
Okay.
So it's 850 square feet?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred ten square feet.
And then there's a handicap bathroom in there as well.
Well, I was, I was just asking because based on the fact that you have four practitioners in the back, you could have one practitioner up front with your parking spaces, but if you had two, you wouldn't have enough parking spaces.
Currently.
Yes. And that's, you know, that.
But there's also staff too.
Yeah.
And another thing, whenever you're gonna move outside, it'll probably require, you know, people maybe to be testing, having to check spots towards the front.
We have two handicap spots currently.
Yeah.
And then we have one handicap on the, on the river side.
Oh, okay.
And there will be a ramp to the handicap parking spot on the riverside.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't, is it Tom?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, Tom. This Tom was explaining to me where it's going to be. When you're, when you're on the side, there's a door with some steps to go up to it, and it's gonna come off the side there and go back down, almost to the barn, almost to the barn door, and then curve out, because you, you were saying it's like three-eighths of an inch to a foot for the grade. Right. It's, it's, it's gonna be a, it's gonna be a long ramp.
Thirty foot runs. To service the handicap, and then it's a short distance into the front.
Right.
I didn't see, I saw it as opposite corner. That, that is my concern.
But we're also just adding, if you guys have any sort of like handicap spots, I think the applicants are willing to value exactly which spots it does need as handicaps. That's, you know, over the new clarified, approved.
It's, it's actually, yeah, you, you need to have, we need one per 25 spaces or one per building facility.
As a minimum, and we can have more.
Yeah, you could have more if you wanted. The problem is to choose up our parking space. It's not the same parking.
And that, well, that was one of the things that we were looking at out there. Because they're two separate buildings, you need to have two separate handicap parking spaces, because you can't, you can't take the handicap parking space for the, the building in the front and stick it down by the back door on, up against the, the Wellness Center itself. It has to be.
It has to be within 75 feet of the front door.
Yeah.
Point on right now, there's three of us.
Where you're thinking.
I.
The reason, the reason we're gonna put it on the riverside, because on my one, there was already a ramp there.
Yeah.
We did the house.
Right.
Also, we've got to be difficult to cut a ramp from under the house.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be down here on this corner.
There's three entrances to the commercial area. So one is Route 1, and then there's a side door on the river side. And that is where the ramp used to be. And then there's also a side door on the parking lot side that you park that tonight.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
So when you walk in that door, there's a common hallway, there's the handicap lot, and then it works.
Oh, okay.
So Tad, I have a quick question. Um, if you consider these as two separate parking areas, each requiring a handicap space, is there a minimum? So if you only have one doctor and you have four spaces that's required, do you still need a handicap parking space for just one office?
No, it's for the, it would be for the facility.
So the whole facility would be considered as one whole?
Right.
Both buildings?
Right.
And they would need two handicap spaces?
But the biggest problem that you have is that the ADA requires you to be 75. Each handicap space is gonna be 75 feet from the front entrance. And that's where you get the problem with where you are, because.
Because there are two buildings?
Yeah, well, the distance is between the two front entrances is.
Really? So if you look at this photograph here, the, the red car and the one to the left of that, renting things to start off.
Do you have your photo?
Is that not 75 feet from both of them?
It could be, but you gotta also think of pathway. When you do it, you have to think of the pathway that you go. I mean, I'm not gonna really regulate that, but I think you're supposed to be like, say.
You don't, you can't measure across the.
No, no, you shouldn't. No, you gotta, it's gonna be 75 feet travel area. That's why you always see them, let's say, uh, go Home Depot, see it's right up front, right in front of the front entrance. Actually, the one in there for actually doesn't need it.
One was on the riverside, Tad, where the plant, where the, uh, the ramp is gonna be, and the other one is by the Wellness Center. Would that be sufficient?
Yeah, yeah, there's two, there's two, there's two in front of the Wellness.
There's two in front, currently, there's two in front of the Wellness.
They have proposed three of them right now. So they wanted to meet it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because they have one, they don't have, I mean, that would, you would need three for 75 foot, 75.
Or sort of set up.
So you can see it.
And it presents itself with it, or at least 75.
I don't know.
And why? I saw the two in that corner, seven, at least 75 feet.
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted them to add one more handicap space. And I thought if you had one by the Wellness Center or two, and one by the river, you, they have plenty.
Yeah, I think they do.
I, yeah, I think they'll be fine.
They may have an excess. Yeah, because the problem is when you, you have a handicap space and you count them for your parking, you're actually limiting the amount of parking that, because unless you focus cater to those who are dysvalve, have dysvalve or impairments or, um, you're reducing the number of parking spaces you have for your regular customers.
So long as I have one, I mean.
Yeah.
Right? Really?
You can get away with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all we require. And if you can find one that's 75 feet, we need 75 feet from the entrance. And in a safe pattern, you could do one.
I wonder if the, the two spots that we're adding in the front of the Route 1, and it could be a dead Christmas one, you could put the ramp on the front of the building, I just thought with the ramp being backwards, it was, like, you know, off of Route 1 more down the advantage spot. But it's a way to serve it, and it's not affect that.
It's, it's what's best for your, your operation, really. It's, it's something we put in our ordinance, and I will always say, put it in, but I do it for the benefit of business owners, because, um, it's not our job to enforce ADA. But I guess it's my job to make sure that my business, um, people don't get in trouble if we can allow them to.
Did you guys have any other questions from the site, sidewalk?
The only, the only observation I had on the sidewalk was that you're really close to the, to the river. That's, you know, that.
Which side of the, the parking lot on your application or the other side?
The other side of the building, where, where you plan on putting in the handicap space. That's not that far from the river, and, and it's.
But that's what was there.
And, and, and that's, that's my point. That was there, but you have to be really careful. You can't build, you can't pave over off to that side, that you can, that edge where the, where the pavement is, that's, that's the extent of where you can go over.
Well, there used to be a garage door. So the pavement was right up to the bottom.
Yeah.
So we were just gonna repaint that.
Yeah, and, and I think that that would be fine. Like I said, my whole concern, and I pointed it out there. If you go off toward the river, from the looks of it, it, and it looks a lot worse on the ground looking at it than it does on an aerial photo. You know, if you went a foot over, you'd be encroaching into the wetlands even more than you already are. And right now, it's allowed because it's an existing site. We're not gonna make you fix that problem. We just can't let you go any closer to the river.
So on that issue that we just mentioned, the side that's supposed to be river, we're kinda looking at, I just wanna point us to the right, moving at 8.85, which talks about roads and driveways that are close to a water body. And I think that's an important one for us all to review. We're concerned about the closeness and, um, if you can get under 8, 8.5. Do you guys wanna read it, or would you prefer that I read it? What I think the gist is, it, it says that the setbacks are 75 feet from the Kamak River, but at the end of it, it says roads and driveways providing access to permitted structures within the setback area. So it applied fully with the requirements of this section, except for that portion of the road or driveway necessary for direct access to the structure. So even if we didn't need the 75, if we consider that side driveway, you know, it's, it's a direct access to the structure. We're not changing it at all, so.
And, but that's the point I'm making. You don't need to change it.
Right.
You've got that spot the way it is now. I see no reason to further encroach upon that, upon the river. Where it is right now is fine, and, and even along, don't go the other way.
But I don't think you're even proposing paving that at this time.
No, I mean, we're just resurfacing that.
Resurfacing.
What does resurfacing mean?
Just.
I always.
On top of it.
Okay, so it's paving.
Or we. I have a little terminology. We're just making a base that looks like paving. We're trying to clean up the building.
And you've done a good job.
Well, not yet. It looks terrible on the outside.
Well, the thought of using that, that. Well, if, if we eventually, you know, end up putting a handicap spot there that's only public, you don't do using that.
It did, it does raise the question of how are you going to get houses yet? You don't have any space to turn around.
No, you don't.
You don't wanna back on the Route 1. I just hope you don't wanna back on the Route 1.
Putting the handicap on that side. I would put the handicap on the other side.
You know, I, I was gonna say, as early as. I pulled in there, I see the handicap spot, always going to be main parking. So wondering, where is the spot? And then find out, oh, you had it, well, back on Route 1, which can be dangerous.
Yeah, yeah, and then turn it into that.
Let's put it up for those.
And you can stick it in that corner with that very first car, right?
Very wanting to on the. Yeah, you can still count the driveway as, as spots.
Right.
But it can be used for a tenant or someone else.
Right.
So you still have some spots to use.
Yeah.
The woman that parks there now, she does have no problem turning around, pull out.
Oh, good. I looked at that and went, oh my goodness.
So we can't, we can't have.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Question overall.
Hang on just a second.
Question over, question overall, how many spots do they need for the residential plus the building that we're speaking of, which is not rented yet? Figuring max there, plus what at the Wellness Center, how many do they need altogether?
Well, I think in 22, 23.
Is already, it would be right front of the garage doors. It actually parks in the garage.
So there.
Why she being.
My two bays are full. Your, okay, your two bays are full.
Yeah.
All right, we need two, we need two parking spaces per residential unit.
The garage.
There's three.
But if, if they have, if they have five.
Because you have another, you have another residential.
Oh, you said how many per bed or something?
No.
Right, you get two.
Two for residential unit.
Okay.
Okay.
And if you have four.
You've got two in there, yours in another apartment, right? So that's, there's four. They've got two, even, don't tell us you fill up the base, okay? So they've got two inside, they need two outside, right?
Correct.
Okay, so there's, let's say, so we got two outside, and then if they've got four practitioners anytime, there's 16, 18.
And there's, and there's going to be that, I, I hate, I know that you don't have anybody in there, but you wanna address the issue of parking for that unit, which is another four. So you're looking at 22 spaces.
That's why it's not rented, because we need park.
Twenty-two states.
That's not 21, because you do have a free day garage. And that thirty, that's a two inside. And, and that thirty, that's a two inside, four outside.
Yep.
One or, you just get three inside. One outside, one outside costs twenty-nine.
How many spaces are on the, uh, the south side?
Two.
In the whole front area? In this area over here, Tom.
Yeah, I think there's two, you can get two.
There is two.
It's wide enough with two cars. So you're, you're either need twenty-one, twenty-two, they're, they're looking at twenty-four. You can go with twenty-four, if you want more spot spacing, you can always kind of pull up, but that's their number eighteen. Is, is.
So get rid of that, so that means they'll be twenty-three.
And if that was the case, then I think.
Quick one, eighteen, Tom.
One at the bottom, one, closest there, southeast corner.
Right by the garage.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's the one that's within a hundred foot setback.
Everything else is outside of the setback, except for the one side, which is already there.
Right, but number eighteen is not existing.
So we'll just get rid of eighteen, watch that.
And you have enough, you still have enough spaces.
Okay.
And then.
That's right.
Yo.
And then so up at the top, where we were gonna add two spaces here, route one, you're still there now, we're gonna add two more. We just make that one handicap for the one zero zero five. And what we needed to, we could actually eliminate one of the two that were.
You're trying to need one.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing one is grab one there, yeah. But I think we'll leave it as it is.
Yeah.
For your clientele, it's.
Might be nice to have it.
Well, let's look at, let's, you know.
Uh, we don't do this at work.
If we're, if we're looking also at, um, and what you can do with that office there, I mean, uh, what, what's your potential? You know, our, 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 in, in table five, twelve, four, two, which is based on required parking space. You know, it, it has lists of different activities that parking spaces are required for that activity. If you're looking for office, you know, the office is one space per two thousand, two hundred, excuse me, two hundred square feet gross area. So you have a, you're done with a lawyer. Well, you have eight hundred, so that's one per two, two hundred, so that's four parking spaces per lawyer. Uh, if you were to do it based on, I just noticed something on residential, residential, how big, you have that, that apartment you guys, one veteran, right?
No, 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 that's two.
That's two?
Yeah.
All right, then my, um, then let's see, uh, you've got, the other one, retail sales for spaces for two, one thousand plus. That's, that's, it's actually less, retail sales is actually less than an office.
Yeah, because they're, they're gonna turn over.
Yeah, they are gonna turn over, you're right.
Well, and we're gonna be pretty selective about who goes in there because there's a ready couple.
And we're in there right now.
Yeah, so we'll just, not somebody that's not gonna make a lot of noise. I don't think retail.
Well, you could, you could put a good account, uh, an accountant in there and the only time they're gonna be busy. Well, they, no, this year they're gonna be busy all year long because they, they're now talking about an extension to October fifteenth.
Really?
Yeah, Mnuchin came out with it yesterday, please give me a break.
I think you're rejecting too much personnel.
But, but, uh, outs- outside of taxis, most companies are not having a lot of traffic.
Yeah, they don't.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Have them figure out the maximum, even if they don't have it, that way they're covered, no matter who gets in there.
Well, I, I'm, I'm thinking that's more.
That's what we're trying to do right now.
That's what it is right, yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
I think all we're doing, if you call it a mental, mental for business or service, when they're all come out the floor, based on, like I said, eight hundred.
So you do four, four spots, you need two hundred feet per.
Ted, they have to, doesn't he want that easy to pay?
Well, I wanna place him for the rest of the lives.
No.
But I think as long as it's.
Easy to live, well, that's what I'm saying.
Why wouldn't it be simple like office?
Why, why wouldn't there be any commercial for you to them? Well, that's all.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, unless it's a restaurant with typically five tables, then I got a parking space.
Yeah, I know. We live there.
I know. You would, that, you're not going to.
That's in the R one, isn't it?
No, this is DB one.
Oh, come on, work with me here, it's in the R one, they can't put a restaurant there.
It's DB one, yes, put a restaurant in there, put food truck in.
That's right.
Welcome to a run.
They go, there goes four of the parking spots.
In Motorland.
Yeah. But no, I thi- I think looking at it from four, four spots, you know, you're covered for whatever you put in there, if you put in one practitioner, they need four spots. You put in, uh, an office, you need four spots, two hundred, two hundred square feet per. So just say four, and that gives you, uh, what you need.
Yeah, the issues that we, one timeline issue, we all went out and saw, um, you know, which way it's gonna pinch for drainage, you know, it's gonna discharge the drainage. Discharge during the flood flow.
Yeah.
Then we just need a detail on that, that shoot, I mean, uh, how that level spreader will be worked, drainage needs to give us details on how that's going. Okay? Because, um, it's gonna go correctly, it's gonna erosion.
Well, it, it's been working, you know, it's just existing.
Yeah, but you're gonna, you have more parking though. Yeah, we're figuring, he's, he right now kind of goes in different directions, but you're kind, he's concentrating all to the same spot. So you have a larger parking unit, it's not, he's gonna grade, that's, that would be the other thing, you need some grading, you need straight. He says it's all going towards this one spot, towards eighteen.
Thirty-eighteen and then out of the field.
Who's saying that?
That's what, that's what the engineer said.
Right.
Yeah. Although I, you know, from what I could see, it was looking like it's more like twenty, parking lot twenty, so that's why we, we need, I think there's more of a gradient there at eighteen, we need a detail on, on how you're gonna handle that.
But what, what would you be looking for?
Well, first of all, we, we need to just have some spot elevations, I think we don't need four grading, we just need some spot elevations and what, what you're gonna grade up at, let's say twelve, and what, what down towards eighteen is gonna, what gradient's gonna be there? Cause it, it is pretty, pretty much gonna be what you have existing.
Yeah.
I would assume, I don't, I don't think it's gonna do a lot more grading. But also a detail on the level spreader, how that water's gonna come into the level spreader and how it's gonna be distributed. What a level spreader is basically is a way of distributing the water so you don't get galling down there. Cause we get a twenty-five year storm, which is four inches of rain in a twelve hour period, that means. It's, that will, can produce a lot of, of erosion of the fish, depending on what the time of concentration, how quickly it comes down. So, uh, I would say that, uh, we would need a detail on that level spreader for that twenty-five years.
Level spreader?
Yeah, well, that's what it says.
Okay.
We need a detail on how this is gonna work and how it's gonna make, cause that, this little thing down here that says.
Yeah.
I don't have a detail.
Okay.
You know, and how big of a level spreader, I mean, he's got, he's got the detail on the parking lot, but I need a detail on that one spreader, because that water's gonna be going into your, onto your property down.
You wanna see it going more towards the partial building, right?
No, I, I, well, I, I, I just wanna make sure it works. Okay, I, a level spreader requires, it has to be engineered properly, it's gotta be level, it's gotta come and it's gonna have enough capacity so the water fills up. What it is, it's really a ditch that's actually level with a lip on it. And it's, it's sort of like, it's like, it's the difference between pouring water out of a plate. You have that water with a plate and your water and you pour it out versus pouring it out of a jug. You have a coin source in a jug, you know it comes out much faster and, and more powerful than it does on a plate, it just sheets off. So it's really important, it's designed to sheet off properly, otherwise it can fail, and then you got to crawl. Because if it starts galling and it starts, um, reeling on you, it'll eat back into your apartment. So you wanna make sure then it's done right, we wanna make sure it's done right too. Discharge area is fine, I don't have a problem with that, it's going. Because we know you're not gonna go back down. Um, but could, but I wouldn't.
So, uh, those, those spaces that we're adding in between the two buildings.
Yeah.
And, you know, towards the field. So if we had a level spreader right on the other side of those.
Well, that's what, that's what, well, he needs, that's why.
I want him to detail, but he's gonna ask me what I'm looking for.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna look, I, I want to want is a detail on how this spreader's gonna work. Where the level spreader.
Is it also that the, the air could determine that the existing drainage seems to be working? And that would be his opinion that nothing furthers near the existing drainage.
Well, he's already spec something different than the existing drainage. That's what I'm responding, I'm responding to the fact that he's already, he's already proposed something, but I don't have any details on.
Okay.
So if he's gonna propose that, I need some details to.
You need detail on what he was proposing.
Yeah.
This is probably the standard thing.
Yeah. Which is his line.
Yes.
Yeah.
He did the bridge. Well.
So he knows, he knows, well, he said it, so he knows what he wants, it just doesn't stay, stay like that.
Okay.
Okay. And I think we're gonna need, we have an extension of parking lots, we're gonna need some landscaping work.
That was mentioned someplace, I saw it.
Yeah.
There's, uh, there's something about the landscaping for, uh, not, not only on route one, but off to the, to the south, it talked about.
To the north.
Was it to the north? I thought it said to the south for the, for residents, and I couldn't find any residents to the south. Well, I know, I thought it was strange.
No, it's to the north, if it's south to the, I'm, I'm saying along route one.
Well, yeah, so you need some, we need adjust the screening along route four. And, um.
What about the screen that's currently there?
Yeah.
And what if we're not, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Oh, no, no, I understand.
Cause we're not, like, if that was there and that's what we had.
Yeah, you are, you have some shots.
There's some shots.
We were just trimming them because I got, we're covering the signs.
Right.
You can see it on this picture, um, and I'll pass this around. It's pretty massive, I mean, I had to trim them. And I used to install satellite dishes without a lab.
Yeah. And that's supposed to make us trustless judgment.
They're huge.
Have we, no, I, 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 I saw them, they're huge, it looks like they're huge, aren't they?
Question for you, Ted.
Yes.
On the le- on the level spreader, that's on the stormwater runoff plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's his own drainage.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, because it referenced here in the notes, uh, that we needed to see that, and I wasn't sure if, it was, if that's what was showing up, or if it was something else.
His design for that level spreader is based on how much runoff is gonna be generated by this. So he's gonna do a quick calculation, probably using the rational. He's, he's looking at the area that's being, that's gonna have imperative surface and transfer. He's gonna determine the path, you know, how, with the. coefficient is for, um, the friction coefficient is a point nine five. So, uh, he'll just do a formula to see what, how much runoff is generating a twenty-five year storm. And he'll size that level spreader based on it, so he's gonna do a small drainage, stormwater drainage. Cause he has to determine whether or not the level spreader's gonna work and blow out. Okay, that, that protection too.
We don't want our septic field to come down.
Well, that's the thing, septic field's right down below, and that's the only thing I feel a lot concerned about. You'd have to have a lot of water going down there, but if you, you did have the usual storm.
Yeah.
It could, it could eat away at the sign, and that doesn't look like a cheap septic system.
No, that was put in pretty big here.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
That'll serve.
That's why it's that size.
That'll bring deals today.
That's a big, that's a very big system, it's always, it has to be, because it's gotta be about flood, flood level. And that's why it's so raised.
I think the soil is fine. As far as the screening, I think it.
I think so.
Yeah.
Well, we also need one street tree. Need one street tree for. Is that if we're just repaving? May it spanning.
Maybe, uh, maybe, uh, maybe on the, on that, uh.
Tongue.
On the tongue, sticking into the parking lot, so it's out of.
Yeah, we don't want it underneath the utilities.
Well, I think the sign's in that tongue.
Is it really?
No. Oh, yeah, that's, yes.
Yeah, I, I.
Is there a requirement for a street tree?
Requirement for a street tree, we put two street trees, we even put two trees, one in one tongue, one in the other.
That's not required, just so I know.
Uh, it's gonna be in section five eleven of route, which is next given.
Any species?
Five nine, my mistake.
Any species?
Yeah, you got a whole list of them that you.
Yeah.
Pick that, pick from that list, I'm serious, they really.
We do, we have a list, we have a, we have a list of acceptable street trees.
Tree, one tree, but I, I think we'd have, I'm just, without reading right closely, I'm not sure if the, the regating application in.
Well, you're expanding your, your party one, that's why.
Is there a threshold of expansion that trees have?
Coming to us. You just wanna be sure, we're not trying to, yeah, too much, trust me, yeah, okay. Just trying to make the numbers clear.
To the chair. To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Watch your trees, cause otherwise you're gonna block your sign and they won't see where it is.
That's why.
It's so, it's so close to the road now.
Yeah.
Probably use a co- co- on the tree, so it's now, doesn't affect the tree. I can give those, I can send that to you, you got, you got a list.
A lot of you know it's supposed to go, I'm not understanding this right now.
No, no, you have to understand our website is. It needs a lot of work, it needs some work.
Yeah.
You know, we don't have an IT person. Well, we do, actually, it needs a volunteer.
Uh, well, there's some guessing, is a tree, one tree somewhere in here, but just, I think your sign's like right here.
It is.
They're talking about a tree, so.
The sign's great, actually, the sign's great.
It's in that area.
Right now.
She just can, I mean, maybe that aerial photograph. That's the sign at the.
Yeah, it's pretty, okay.
She's saying behind it.
Yeah, we're talking about behind it, we're not talking about front. We don't wanna influence, if anything, or the well, yeah. So those two tongues would, that would satisfy the need, each one of those tongues, that would take care of it. That's more than, that's, it's less, it's more than fifty feet, but that would be okay.
This, this now, Tommy, it's gonna be a parking.
Well, I'm, yeah, we're looking at this right here, or you take more. You got four here, you put another one here?
No, yeah. Oh, you mean here?
Yeah, that's, that's on that one, that's what we're talking about, that would take care of that problem.
I don't know if we can put one there because of the underground utilities. I might be able to, oh, take a look, sure.
And it's, it's switched on calendar pairs, for case, I scout, so you don't have to worry about this. Because he, he referred to that problem. He had, maybe, on him, lay his maples out there, and, yeah, and one thing that worked.
Also, to the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Question also too, since those are two different lots, the, the, uh, the unit up front along the river, they're gonna have to have a sign for, uh, whoever's in there.
There is a sign, that's where Adrian can just have a sign.
Not the wellness sign.
No, no.
There's a sign, there's an existing sign in front of the commercial space group, applying how Adrian.
It's smaller than what she's wanted. Just thought. If you wanted a bigger sign.
Is there anything else? Anything that the planning board, uh, saw on the sidewalk?
Nope.
Nothing of concern.
No, not at this point, Susan? Oh, awesome. You muted yourself.
You muted.
You muted.
God, sorry. I'm good.
Okay. Marty?
I'm good.
All right.
Okay. Anything that, that you want to address that we haven't?
Yeah, I think so. I think because of the initial confusion of whether they had submitted an application or pre-application. I'd like to unpack that a little more here at a time. Because I think it was our understanding that we did submit an application. And so I don't know if you have a copy of that application.
Yeah, I do. It's, it's on a pre-app. It's on a pre-app form.
So, so Tom, so that's the one you probably discussed with forum from.
Yeah, I, I've actually been treating it like it was a real application.
Actually, you, you continue to do that?
Yeah, I, I did.
But can, yeah, that's how you could treat it.
That's the way I'm treating.
Okay.
I consider this, I consider this, we, we don't do, we don't do determination of completeness on a pre-apps. So, you know, I, there's, the problem is this, I recognize that mistake. That's why it's not listed as a pre-application. It's listed as determination of.
Okay.
Could, could we just?
Uh, it's, they come in, it comes in a package and it has the pre-app form and it's got the actual fore end that you filled out pre-app. What you put in the checklist?
What, what waivers?
I, I know.
What waivers are being asked for?
Uh, the waivers that are being asked for, um, let's see. The approval block, we didn't need the approval block, guys. That's what we signed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, we need that. Um, let's see. Uh, you, landscape plans we just talked about. So that's going to be taken care of. Uh, building plans, we don't need. Uh, elevation signs, we don't need. Cost estimates. Yeah, we need.
Yeah, we need cost estimates.
They were in there. They're in there. They're in.
Oh, I thought they were. I thought they were. You had it checked up that you don't need.
Thank you.
You know what?
And you need a stormwater plant, right?
We need a stormwater plant and we need details. That's what we really need. But let's go over any other waivers. Um.
So is, uh,
The, uh.
What did we discuss earlier? Is that the stormwater?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the stormwater. It's a small plant. Look, you're an existing, so you're adding additional, uh, paint surface. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So we need a modified stormwater plant. Your engineer's actually kind of, I think he's done it in his head. Uh, we just need him to, probably use, as I said, the rational method. And, and if he's a DIT engineer, he knows that. Yeah, CIA.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure I was understanding.
Yeah. I can send you, uh, you want me to send you an email or a letter?
Um, do you take that?
No, I can just ask you. No, I mean, just to summarize all the things that we want.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, that would, that would be really helpful.
Like, you got it expedited that we know exactly what you guys need.
Right. Yeah, okay.
But if we, do we want to keep it on that list?
Yeah, yeah, I might as well. I'm sure it's got everything. Um. So we've got the landscape idea. I will send you those, the stack on that. Building plans need, can be waived. We don't need that. Scamatic signs can be waived. Cost estimates we have. Uh, site features. Um, the applicant's asking for waiver on site features and, and, uh, topo. I sense it's already developed, right?
And.
Yes.
And runoff, it's going to be detailed.
Yeah, I mean.
At least we certainly have a reason for asking for the site.
Yes, it is. And, and when I say site, it would be a full topo search. But he's got, why not reserve it already?
He submitted a topo.
Oh, yeah, you did. It wasn't on the plan. It wasn't on the, there's the topo. They got it. Yeah, your engineer's going to need this.
He has it.
Yeah, he's got it. Well, yeah. He's been used.
Can you see? I think, I think I would have looked at that and said, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there is, no, that's.
You know, it's in the painting.
It was. I thought it was.
Trying to do it.
I thought it was. I think what my issue was, I, I had to put, um, that in the plan up on the window, see through.
Oh, all right.
Yeah. Um, otherwise, yeah, I think, I, I'd say that, that's been submitted. Uh, the, the engineer will probably take spots and make an assumption about spots on here. This looks like it's probably from the light art. Doesn't say. It's probably from wider. Use all the time. So that works. Uh, let's keep going. Uh, you, you gave me the, the, uh, um, all the mailing addresses. You're okay. It's okay. It's, it just worked. You were concerned.
It was during COVID. I couldn't.
I know. I, I.
Worked with me. So I typed up the envelopes.
It was great.
And like, I was like, did it work?
I don't have to stick them on the envelopes. Uh, you don't need the, uh, yeah, I agree. They don't need the Elliott S E N A, which we have two sentences. It's already working. Uh, there's no pavements, just stormwater counts. No traffic study is required. I'm, they, they, um, that's not required. Groundwater study is not required. Um. They've got property boundary, the proposed sidewalk. You got to show us the change in the parking.
But you mean to change from the existing parking to new parking?
Are you going to change any of the parking you gave us on the plan? You're, you're going to take off that eighteen.
Eighteen.
That's it.
That's eliminated eighteen.
So updated.
Yeah, an updated cycle.
With the signature walk.
Please. Yeah, because we can't sign it. Without that, we can't sign. And I'm going to need them.
Eighteen to go.
Yeah.
And I'm going to need a full size. These guys are going to have the small, you know, eleven by seventeen. Yep. But I need, I need two big ones. And one you're going to want for yourselves, uh, and one I need. And I also need a PDF of it. Okay. Actually, I need two of them. I need a mile art.
Yeah.
I need a mile art. I need a mile art.
If your D S doesn't require it anymore.
I know. But you see, we do fashion.
Okay.
Because you see, we, you know, how do you have a Blu-ray to run it on? But it's the only thing that's permanent. I've got it in this place because your plan will just appear at some point. It'll, it'll come out of the file. Some of the prayers will all put in the wrong file. I'm missing. And so I always give out a flat. I'll say, here is wellness center right here when somebody comes in, like a lawyer and says, what's the plan? I don't see a plan. So that's why we have miles. I know it's old technology. I know that out there. Um, I, if I, if I had scanner, I'd do my own PDFs, but I have to go to Staples. And that's case too much. Got it.
You don't think Staples can do the mile art?
Yes, they can.
Can I?
Yeah.
It does work.
Because I think Susan had mentioned there's copy, there's a copy center there at the spur.
Right. Copy it. Right on Route One. They definitely do mile arts.
You just, you just stopped me there, my friend.
I know. I should have shut up. I'm sorry.
Are there any other waivers that will happen?
I, I, I think the only waivers we had were a waiver on. No, there's no other waivers.
So what do we have?
Uh, it boils down to, um, most of this, it doesn't apply. Waiver on the, uh, the building plans, the signs. Uh, so it's traffic impact, groundwater study. Oh, we should.
Did we ask for a waiver on that?
Yeah. No, you said it didn't apply.
I think that might have been based on our underlying idea that this was repaving an existing parking lot. Wasn't going to change the traffic flow.
But he, he's going to want to take a look at it to make sure that it's not going to encroach if a truck has to come in there. It needs to be a return or he's going to add, somebody's going to end up.
Bigger. So I think common sense test is that, like, it's going to be better.
Easy, easy. And we're giving you. Well, I, I asked him about that.
So you, so, so fire chief.
So will the, the twenty four feet that you?
Yeah.
Said that we needed, would that be adequate for the truck? Should be. We just, we just asked him, he might ask you to strike that part portion and say, give you a filing, more parking, like the trailer. But right now you don't have any parking in the building. And he might ask you to strike it first.
Okay.
Because what he wants to do is, if he needs to, his concern is being able to get in with his truck setup. Make sure you can ladder your building, ladder your building where you live in. Um, and also be able to get crews in and, and pose this in and out. That's what he's hoping to.
He had three, he had three trucks there two months ago. And he had no problem with it. Just saying. I'm just saying because I was there and I was freaking out. So there were three trucks and he pulled right in. And he taught me how to make everything up to speed and I did it all.
Up to speed?
Yeah, like, you know, there's the fire, the fire alarm control panel, make sure I make the door, fire alarm control.
So he's very familiar with this. I would imagine he did because you had to have a fine separation between the, uh, the commercial space and the, uh, wooden structure.
Yep, so.
So he had to cover the fire marshal.
I don't know what, all I know is that.
I would just applaud him for having gotten enough.
I will ask, I will ask the control lab. Does that stand?
Okay. That was a fun, wasn't it?
That was fun.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you know, so you got the letter and you asked for it.
Yes, yeah, you have it. So as far as the, uh, one of the, this is, uh, a tree. Well, this is, this is.
No.
Next time we can, you, you know how, you can't consider this complete.
No, I have.
Well, next time you come in, you can have all these things. We can complete. And then we can move right into whatever.
Public, public hearing.
That's same time.
Public hearing went after that.
We need two weeks to advertise the public hearing.
Well, till next time.
Can I just, I, I mean, chances are there will still be some minor details or revisions that we, we, you might need to clean up on. Usually it'll take that extra two weeks, uh, unless you ace everything.
So is that, just to clarify, between the next meeting, when we do the things we have list now?
Yeah.
We can clean those things up in between that meeting and the public hearing?
Public hearing. Great, correct, yeah. And then at the public hearing, among the things that I think we're so close to have this all, all set. And then at that public hearing, then we can, uh, move on to consider, uh, approval of.
Sorry. That's usually, we usually do the approval, if we're going to do the approval. We usually do it the same day that we have the public hearing. So unless there, unless there's something in the application, because again, we can say that the application is complete. And there may be something in there that causes it to fail. Because we didn't get it. We need a stormwater runoff plan. And it says, no, if you do this, it's going to flood the river. Ah, yeah, we probably don't want to give you that money.
So. Do tab?
We had the application.
All things considered, best case scenario, this would be, could be done by the end of July.
By the end of July. Probably the twenty third, I would say.
Four weeks from.
Because with, because the, the, if we give it complete on the night, which is the next meeting, two weeks later on the twenty third, we would be able to, we could post the public hearing and, and proceed at that point.
Guys, cautious, cautiously optimistic.
Huh?
Yeah.
And you guys are giving no time to do it. Putting them against the wall, too.
Well, that's up to them. I mean, if they don't, if they get, if they get it into this.
We.
We're going to take more time.
There it is.
Yeah. If, if you don't, if you don't have it ready, then we'll just have to continue on. It, it, it does create a timeframe issue.
Yeah.
It, it does create a timeframe issue because our standard of acceptance is fourteen days prior to the meeting in order to get on the agenda.
Means you've got to have it today.
Yeah, pretty much.
Well, give me something next week.
Okay.
I, I would say, uh, that we would want to do it the same way we did with the last application, say by Monday.
Okay.
Well, let me just make sure.
That's what we told the other half.
Next one, yeah.
Can I confirm what we know, what we need to do for Monday?
Sure.
So when we were going through that list, the things that I wrote, approval block, stormwater plan, updated plan showing the couple changes. And the fire chief letter that you were going to get.
And landscape.
Landscape. And when you say landscape, you mean?
Trees.
Showing those two potential trees.
And whatever changes you're going to do in the parking lot, because you're talking about moving on a few spaces.
That would be on, when we take eighteen out, we'll have that updated.
And you're also thinking about getting rid of one of the, one of the handicap spaces.
Yeah, we're going to move this.
I think we should.
Yeah, so.
As we said, I haven't.
Update that, okay.
What's? An update, that's mostly an update.
I just want clarification. I'm sorry. So I, and I'm trying to think. This is a big deal. I just want to make sure we're giving you what you want. For the landscaping, what do we need? Just to show you we're about, we're going to put a tree here?
Yeah, pretty much.
That's all we need.
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to put a tree here.
There's an arrow.
I'll send you the list. I'll send you the list Monday.
Okay, all right.
You need by Monday, the, post the date, Monday, in order to, this coming Monday.
Today's the twenty fifth.
You can't do it by, because it's coming Monday. I'm telling you right now.
The engineer's going to be able to.
Yeah. And then the problem is you're going to be doing it on a Fourth of July weekend. If I let you go to the next Monday.
The following Monday is the sixth.
Right.
Right. That's a Fourth of July weekend.
Yeah.
But it happens on the first.
You gotta get it done this weekend and eight, in the first part of the.
Okay.
Okay. Just for your own benefit, that's what you want. Um, and we're. Let me know how your progress is because we, because we're on four tens a lot. We're not here on Friday automatically. So that means we're not here Thursday. That's our Fourth of July.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
Okay.
Right here. So I'll get you something Monday. I'll get you the, because I'm, I'm, I don't go in tomorrow. So I, I won't get you this stuff on Monday. I'll send you.
Okay.
The trees. Make a choice. I'll even make a suggestion. Well, I'll call the engineer tomorrow and try to get this.
Okay.
Yeah, he might. The engineer must have it.
This is not.
Because he just needs to give us what that detail was. He's got to have it. I mean, he's, he showed where it is.
Runoff.
Yeah.
It's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know it. He did that really quickly.
L A, it was a landscape project.
Okay. Any other questions for us?
Just thank you guys.
Hey, thank you for coming in.
Clarify.
Thanks for doing the walk.
In two weeks.
I like that answer.
No, we don't, we don't want, we don't want to spend a lot of time. We want to hear these things, so. But you got, we're going to do this.
Yeah. You want to get it done. We want to get it done.
Right.
I, I hate having to look at the same thing. Three, four, five, six meetings. It's like, oh, please. And some of them we end up having to do that.
Well, plus the papers are, you know, they're busy.
Yeah.
We got to get on their dock. Right? I mean, that's the big item. That's the plate. I had it. Yeah.
Who'd you get for paper?
So now we're going to do.
I don't know who they are.
Yes.
I'm always curious as to.
Oh, you're the attorney.
You know, who the different papers are. Who do people use?
You know, I wear many hats.
Are you the son of a bitch?
One of these days I'm going to have to have my paper, my driveway done. When I pull into my driveway, my car fits into these two ruts where the pavement is just. Some guy, it's like, good, I don't have to drive anymore, just.
Yeah, right.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great week, thank you.
Okay, the next item that we had, yeah. It's right there. A discussion of proposals to establish uniform construction and dimensional standards for commercial driveways. Do we have anything on it?
Yes, sir. I haven't finished it. It's slow and important.
You mentioned that, Jim, but this is the latest one that I know.
Yeah, I had a little bit more for.
Okay, because I don't see it.
Uh, the, the thing about it basically, gentlemen, is a sound shoe, um, every place I work. Driveways are all over the place, some of them are scaring me. Uh, but usually they, they basically say that they, a driveway for multifamily or for commercial. Uh, space should be twenty to twenty-four feet wide. No less than twenty, no more than twenty-four. Twenty, twenty-four is pretty big, that's a, that's a, that's an arterial road.
Mm-hmm.
But it's also important because you're not be able to drive. Uh, I was looking for eighteen feet and that wasn't really there. Making footwork and you were finding that it was really. Mainly because of turning. And because of truck traffic that you get and delivery trucks and stuff like that. The thing that really got me was the, the, the throat of coming into a, a, into a major road. And if we look at our commercial driveways. Most of them are going to be coming into Route One or into Route One Eleven. We have some that are coming along town, but pretty much that's where they're going to be most of them. We already have standards for us. So what I'm thinking a lot more is just. We're going to be good for a win and leaning for the same, should be a minimum of twenty feet. Now, right now, we're requiring driveways in sixteen feet with two-foot shoulders.
We're not requiring them.
Well, the circular. So this is, this is bigger than a private way that serves ten lots.
Yeah.
But, um, I don't find anybody who goes under twenty.
And I, I don't have a problem with twenty, we already have standards on EB one?
Uh, not really, we really don't have driveway standards.
Okay, then I, I miss.
We have, what we have is speed opener standards. And our standard, street opening standards, maybe what the R T requires. They base it on volume traffic, but we can do the same thing. I guess that's my question here, do you want, before I pursue any further on this. Do we want to make distinctions or do we want them all make them all the same? Stations will be based on amount of traffic generated by multiple commercials.
I would rather make them all the same because, just because you put in a commercial. Facility now that only requires two or three cars. Uh, a day does not mean that that will not upgrade and change at some point in time. I just assume, say, right now, this is the standard it has to meet and everybody has to meet that standard.
No, but what about, what about the, the small, this shop that, and wouldn't be a commercial lot? That would be a hardship.
Well, it's also, you know, it can also be somewhat unsightly. And it, it doesn't have to be that big in any particular, why do we have to make it that big?
Yeah.
Why not just?
Well, twenty feet's a.
Well, I would, my, my argument for making it. It is so that they're all uniform and there's never a question of what size do I have to have? This is the size that you have to have. It simplifies the entire process to me.
Well, that's why I started off with the range of twenty or twenty-four. But if you want to make it all twenty or twenty-four, that's the issue.
I think twenty-four is too big.
Twenty-four is big, um, but you'll find that, you'll find that the lanes, you'll find that the, let's say, coming out of. Any of the stores in, in Bedford, more than twenty-four feet.
So is it twenty tab with the shoulders? Or twenty in addition to shoulders?
There would probably be. On the four feet.
Yeah, we're talking about twenty feet worth of pavement and then.
And then the shoulders.
Yeah, then the shoulders.
Yeah, okay.
Limerick Road right here, that's probably twenty feet.
It's an arterial.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll show them this rail. Yeah, if you ever tried to walk along it, well.
Not safely.
It's not safe. Yeah, we have very, very small shoulders. Um, alright, what I could do, I mean, I, I need direction which, which we're, I don't want to spend too much time. Um, if we want system and, and you guys change your mind, if you wanted to do variable based on traffic, fine. If you want to make it all the same standard, terrific, I just need to go with what you want to do.
See, I, I would tend to go with all one standard because the variable, what do you do if you change? You're stuck with whatever it was that you said addition and, and you have no, no room for adaptation at all. So I, I would just assume saying that it's, it's that uniform standard. Everybody that has a commercial piece of property knows what the size of that driveway has to be.
And you would say twenty?
I would say twenty, no, I would say twenty.
I would say twenty, I don't think it should be any bigger than that.
Was there a thinking minimum?
Twenty.
Well, actually, I had twenty, and what I proposed is twenty to twenty-four, it was a playbook call on that.
You see, I would, I would say twenty, twenty is big enough for two fire trucks going in each direction, one in each direction. So if you needed to get in there, you could get a truck, yeah.
Okay, you could do it with eighteen, but it's tight. Well, actually, you might not because of the mirrors. So if a business wanted to do twenty-four.
They can do it.
We can do it, so it's, it's a minimum that the proposal is on.
Well, yeah, we could, we could go twenty to twenty-four and leave it up to the business, so you have to have a minimum of twenty and.
No more than, I mean, we don't want to, don't.
No more than twenty-four.
Because we are trying to have a certain image of this.
So do you want to make it no smaller than eighteen and no larger than twenty-four? That at least gives you some ability to make distinctions depending upon the size of the commercial enterprise?
I would go with twenty to twenty-four simply because I want to make sure that the fire trucks can get in them.
Okay, so make it twenty to twenty-four. I, I don't disagree with that.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Next thing is going to be pavement.
Of course it has to be paved.
Yeah.
We right.
Exclusive of shoulders.
We have a seasonal use requirement which says it doesn't have to be painted if it's not open during the winter risk. And that's how, that's how Beverly Hill operates.
Okay.
That's also how the farmer's daughter operates.
Okay, and then I would, I would grant that.
That create a problem? If, no, I mean, if Frank is speaking, that's also how.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that if they're not open during the winter.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that as long as, as long as it's understood that if that becomes a year-round business, it must get made, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be language, Tad, you'd have to put in.
Yep.
Yeah.
Alright, I will at the next, by the next. At the next opportunity, I will have that to you guys. Yeah.
It's a timely, right? You know. You can't work on that.
Spoken like a true lawyer.
Except when I give my boss, you know, OT at time and a half, and he goes, you've already killed OT budget, are you going to do more? I don't think so.
That's right. He's, he's looking at it going, you know, it wouldn't be bad.
What he says is why can't you do it in forty hours?
So is that the last item on the agenda?
I'm going to bring up one other thing over there, I'm going to, I'm going to set my footer and say, I just, I heard that from, um, Jeff. A colleague from D P today about, I sent him our proposed changes to the ordinance. Uh, to the shoreline zoning ordinance, the ones that we passed, and he, you like the, um. He said he'd accept the, uh, criteria for a variance for the SO district. Because we're, our SO district is more restrictive than the chapter one thousand. But when we get down to stream protection district, we're going to have a little, he, he said, you better put some standards in there for that. But, um, that might be a little tougher because that's a requirement under one, under chapter one thousand. So we, we, we regulate, we regulate foresty wetlands where they don't regulate, but we regulate streams where they regulate streams.
Does that have any implications for current applicants?
Um, yeah. Yeah, it does. So he basically saying, if you're going to have special exceptions, you better.
Do it.
You better have good criteria to do it better because. He's not saying, he's not saying he's going to, he's just saying. If you're going to have a special exception, we have criteria. And I need to approve this. Um, okay, he doesn't have problems with what we have for SO, it's, those are good. Um, the other, the only thing that he does, he, he's not really happy about is a reduction of commercial frontage on. On a shoreline zone. Which is three hundred feet, which we all agree was pretty absurd. Uh, because number one, we don't have a lot of commercial frontage on what I would consider to be high-dye waterfront areas. We only have really two well-identified ones, one is the Kennebunk River, which is an abatable river sections. Uh, the other one is Brimstone Pond, which technically meets the standards of Great Pond. Um, it's owned by one family pretty much and it is not really a good recreational resource for the.
I've never been back there, it's serious, pretty much a swamp, right?
Yeah, it's about four feet deep in the deepest part, four to six feet, it's closing in. Uh, the.
It's flusen?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, you know, understand that cattails, pipe up. And the, the limit for type, it's a three-foot water machine. So it's at four feet in the deepest parts. So we're getting to the point where that might get covered. As it silts up, you've got a hydrox session here, you've got water pouring in, you've got sediment pouring in. And eventually it'll start filling up as it fills up and it just lose water, surface water, and not be great bonding. The great ponds defined as being ten acres.
Is there any revision on that?
Through, Chair.
Yeah. Yeah, Marty.
Who is this complaining?
Nobody's complaining.
No, what Tad said, what we didn't do, who was giving him?
That's, that's the head of the shoreline zoning unit in D P who's going to approve our changes.
Okay, because I couldn't hear you, you were over talking and I didn't hear the name.
I'm sorry, I've also got this rag in my face.
I would, um, I would almost like to see us take out the special exceptions completely. That's the ordinance and there are no exceptions. Because that's essentially what the state of Maine is telling us.
Yeah.
Unless we can come up with some really good definitions and, and rationale as to why we're going to do it. And I think that that's going to be the hard part, we may all have, uh, an understanding of, of. What we think it should be, but putting clarity to that and putting it down on paper in, in verbiage that would. Hold up, I think is going to be difficult. So I think it would be much easier just to take special exceptions out completely. There are no special exceptions in the shoreline.
Yes, it is, but there's always special exceptions in anything.
Well, so, but.
Somebody else can figure out what they are.
Why don't we follow what the state of Maine does?
Because the state, we, we have standards that are a little higher than the state of Maine, more restricted than the state of Maine. Our standards for short, for, um, streams are more, are, are, uh, more stringent than state of Maine.
So how do we avoid, Tad, how do we avoid an issue? So I don't want to drag this on too long, but how do we avoid an issue where there seems like there is a loophole? Not that there is, because I guess we have precedent that it's always been a natural factor that has qualified as a special exception. But it could be argued at this point because the language isn't, uh, specific enough, you know, one could argue that. That, um, something like what's happening at Raymond Acres could conceivably be considered a special exception. Which is why I'm thinking that we, you know, at least my thinking is, in my opinion, I would reject the application and let it go. To the Z B A and see what they decide. As opposed to, you know, trying to fudge our, the ordinance and the interpretation of what a special exception is.
Well, I don't, I don't think we should discuss the Raymond Acres one, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm speaking of them as an example, but in, in more general terms. That if there's something like this comes up again and it's a man-made issue.
We will, we will see it again and, and that's, that's one of the reasons, I think. Because how are we going to be able to clarify all of the things that could qualify for a special exception? The sun came up in the east, therefore it's a special exception and you didn't mention it in the ordinance. Therefore, since it wasn't mentioned, we should allow it, I think we should simply say there are no special exceptions.
I think it's all, that, that's what we're doing. I think on the flip side, at, at the same time, the planning board, if it's very clear about what the goal is in doing these. These environmental regulations and specifying under what circumstances a pre-existing condition might qualify. I think if you.
Okay.
If you did that, then, then if somebody makes a mistake, that's not a special exception.
Right, I, and that's sort of what I was saying.
Pre-existing condition, then, then you could, that, that might be a basis in which to do it, which is what we did with soup. Quite frankly, that was a pre-existing lot with a pre-existing building envelope and we changed, and the ordinance became stricter. And the ordinance didn't exist when it was done.
Marty, you had something?
Yeah, what are the, the state standards are less than ours? What would happen if we follow the state standard?
Well, we would have very, what would be really interesting, oh boy, do I want to get into this? Um. The bigger state standard that we have right now, um, pertaining to what we're talking about in the application we've got is. We, we basically have extended what the state regulates for streams. Um, the state says any part of a blue line on its, on a. Seven and a half minutes quad, in any of the land below the confluence of two tributaries is regulated. That's about as arbitrary as you can possibly get. Because, uh, it, it means you could take, like, say, a river, and the first two tributaries going. The rest of the watershed is not covered and, and that's why I wish Jamie was here because he, well, actually, you guys weren't here, remember we had this debate? And, and we said, look, we have a lot of wetlands in the town of Huron, we're floating because we got to have so much clay in the. Our bigger, our biggest concern is that, not that we have large piping plover areas or waiting bird habitat, we don't. What we have is we have some important streams that feed into the Kennebunk River. And we have some huge wat- watersheds that feed into the Kennebunk River. And, uh, our real concern is surface water, not so much wetlands as much as in its surface water, remember that in the discussion? And what we're finding out right now, gentlemen, I might as well approach you now, is, um. Kennebunk River study, I, I mentioned this at our last meeting, Kennebunk River study, I'm on that committee, it's, it's done water tests. And they've done water testing in the Kennebunk River, it's trying to find sources of pollution and nutrient buildup. That are causing Kennebunk River to be rated as class D waters, sub-stable waters. What we found out is there's two major hotspots along the river. At least the testing has revealed this, we're doing some more testing right now, but they are basically Gosmo Brook and Duck Duck Brook. Not Illwif Brook, not, the area is up in Lyman, it's us, those two brooks are the hotspots. We have colorful problems. And we have some other problems in there too, we have nutrient buildup problems. We do, and subject systems problem, it's not animal, they tested for animal versus human. And this was done this past summer, last summer, and they're doing some more tests now. In fact, I got a meeting with them next week, Zoom in. In which, uh, we're going to go over this, but I will tell you this, the next phase when we finish the study. They'll identify those two brooks and, and the duck brook one starts all the way up top. We got a hotspot up near his songs. But it's not where his song's going to work. So, really, heck, that's why.
Which song, sorry?
Pilot Farms. Pilot Farms two. Okay, but where, where they show the testing site is not where there's any development, they haven't developed on that section yet. So we said, I said, is it dead animal, you know, they said, no, it's human, it's a dead human. Said, no, it's colorful, oh geez. Um, and it continues down, there's another hotspot up in tributary, the western tributary that comes, you think, from Liberty Acres. Those subject systems are probably fifty years old.
Liberty Acres is up at the top of Huron.
Yeah, it's where, it's where we were, uh, this evening.
Right, where Maplewood is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, well, yeah, it's, it's right across the street from it, where it goes up. It's a, it goes up.
It parallels New York. Yeah, because the top part was the one that runs behind MG Lane.
Yeah, it's what we just did with, uh, with Walter Woods and Oak Ridge Terrace.
Not far from DuBois, right?
Oh, yeah, no, no, it's a distance, different.
Is it?
It flows, it basically flows southwest.
Yeah.
Towards Kennebunk River. It goes through the Kennebunk River, over Richland.
Falling away from one eleven.
If you, if you go down Downing Road, but down and around the corner, you're going to cross a bridge, that's Duck Brook. And it runs all the way down, it joins up down near the turnpike.
Through the chair. Through the chair.
And it comes into Kennebunk River, you have, have to, uh, into Almond Woods. It comes into, um, goes under Downing Road. Goes behind Rich's house, goes under Downing Road, um, that, that big project that we did down.
What time is it?
Then goes, winds into what is now, um, well, what was. Anyways, it goes along in parallels. It's all made, it's grown up land, and this could parallel season trail until it crosses under that stone bridge. And it goes into Kennebunk River, goes around Kennebunk River down there.
So should we consider rewriting or adding, uh, some more specificity to what a special exception is? And leave it at that rather than eliminating it altogether?
Well, those, those are the two options. We haven't got very specific in terms of what we want a special circumstance to be. Or we do it the easy way, and we just say, no, there are no special circumstances.
Well, you could say it, it has to be environmental, or it has to be natural, or it can't be man-made, or, I don't know.
And, and I, I'm fine going either way. I really am, I just, as long as we understand if we're going to get specific, it's a lot more drawn out and a lot longer process than it would be to simply say, there are no special circumstances.
It's more, it's more brain-sport.
It does.
Yeah, through the chair.
As far as the, the planning board to be more judge, be more of a judge.
Well, I would, and I would.
Make a decision whether this is, and you, and you go balance, you're going to balance people's economic condition or financial hardship versus environmental impact.
Well, I, I would throw out the special circumstance. Yes, it has to be an environmental impact for one, but for two, it cannot be something that the applicant caused to happen. It must be a pre-existing condition of the site, not something that the applicant did that resulted in having to request a special circumstance.
Yeah, I think what it caused to know that.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with that.
And that, that's where the verbiage would come in, I have no idea how to go about making it, making any of that stuff.
I think that's what the state would come into it, too, since, you know, the state is, state's all. I don't think they feel real, but they like what we have done with the SO district. I've got no flack from them at all. What I got flack for was eliminating three hundred foot and short frontage requirement for a commercial lot.
Yeah, but they're, they're not really zeroing in on what, around those particular situations with that. That was just a knee-jerk reaction, general, of that.
Yeah, well, he, he, he may make me do it, and then they, what we'll do is we'll still pass it. And then we'll have to go back and fix it. Because I told them, I'm not supportive.
Yes.
Since then, I'm not going to approve it. Anyway.
Through the chair.
I'll, I'll, I'll put the three hundred back in.
Be right there, Marty.
We're making it two hundred.
Okay.
We're going from three hundred to two hundred. And the assumption is that you're putting a commercial facility on a, um, a recreational water feature. Like a lakefront or a riverfront.
Yeah, it's just not applicable.
It's not a, maybe a riverfront, but not.
But even, even, yeah.
I have a three hundred foot stretch of land in a commercial district along Kennebunk River. And then the Gulf Coast doesn't offer, and that's actually in our form.
Yeah.
Yeah, Marty.
Question is, does Duck Brook or whatever, does that come off of Clearview Estates through there? Because at one time, that was owned as supposedly was farmland. Uh, could that been pre-deposited before it was developed?
Uh, you know, that's, that's a very good question, Marty, and I asked the same thing, and they said the biologics wouldn't survive. It's not, it's not an old, it's not an artifact. It is an existing condition, which means we got, we've got pollution occurring.
Yeah, it's ongoing.
Yeah, it's ongoing, this, yeah.
So it's, it may, it may.
That showed that. We'll see if the new test confirmed that, that's why I really want to see what's happening.
So it may be leaching.
The properties along that property.
Yeah, that's, that's the next step. What, what I anticipate will happen is be the same thing with the Thatcher. Um, what will happen is that we'll probably go to the next level, which will be a remediation step. And what we can identify the problem, coming up with a plan to remediate the problem to improve water quality, which is what we did in Thatcher, in, in, in Richardsonburg. Now, our role in that was very small because, quite frankly, we weren't a problem. It's good for you, it was a problem. We made a bigger district, we actually, we never even regulated those streams until we did this change in shoreline zoning. We made that a hundred-foot setback and still seventy-five foot setback, and that made everything completely happen. In this, we're going to be a, a little more targeted, and the money made that we might be asking for would be for identifying the problems and then coming up with remediation. The third thing would be funding remedial. So this is, this is, this is what grandsmanship's all about, guys. We're not doing it, it's most reserved, it's doing. And I, I, my gut feeling is, if we are that problem, we will want to fix that so we don't, we, we're not identifying this as a DEP urban impaired watershed, which that would cause a problem. Because that will bring in fish and water. Because they'll start talking about changing residential culvert sizes. When you gravel the bottoms and everything, so forth, so.
So that gives us an impetus to define what special exception is so we don't contribute down the road to some of the issues that are occurring right now in Gosbrook and Duck Brook. So, you know, we probably just need to figure out what language, if any, we're going to add or if we're going to eliminate special exception altogether and make it discretionary or.
Right.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not a big fan of discretionary because it's too easy to say, well, yeah, but, you know, Susan's my friend. I don't want to do her harm.
Yeah, and I don't want to make a discretionary either. I'm just saying, if you eliminate the, the language altogether, then does that, you know, naturally occur?
But I, I would look at it and say, I wouldn't eliminate the language altogether. I would look at it and, and say, state straight up front, there are no special exceptions. One line.
Unless.
No, there are no special exceptions. If we say unless, then we have to go through and define what all of that is.
Well, so you said, if it was a pre-existing condition on the lot, or if it was some other environmental factor that we haven't thought of, but that it can't be as a result of the landowner's activities on the lot.
Yeah, we, yeah, and we can go through and we can come up with that, and we can, and, and definitely say that it has to be environmental in nature and, and clarify what all of that stuff happens to be. And, and that's fine, I mean, I don't care if we go through and do it that way, or if we go through and say, there are no special exceptions.
We can think about it.
Rich, you mean no crystal ball? Rich?
No, Marty, I don't have a crystal ball.
No, I mean, so we don't have no crystal balls under the special exceptions.
Well, that's, yeah, that's one way of looking at it. Ted?
I think we could take a stab at it, I think, I think we're bound to take a stab at it because, what we thought would be a simple decision-making process would face, would occur, and how the issue sounds or something.
Yeah, so, you know.
It's not so simple, it's not as cut and dry as we all thought it was.
It, it would probably behoove us to take a stab at it and document the process that we're, we've gone through. And then if we get to the point where we just can't, we're struggling under it for whatever reason, then we could say, okay, fine, we gave it our best shot, now we'll just say, okay, there aren't any. I think we could probably come up with, with some good stuff. I don't think we're going to be able to identify, uh, to any certainty, all of the variables that may come across. But we can list out a, a great many of, of the, uh, initial variables that everything may fall under.
We got to consider not fact, and we're going to consider.
Yeah.
Yes.
And you can make it generally specific, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do.
It's, it's, it's oxymoronic, but.
It's getting late.
The Civil War.
It's getting late.
All right.
Oh, my goodness.
Uh, Tom made the motion to adjourn, Yen seconded it. It is now nine forty-two, and we are done.
Thank you so much, guys.
Night.
Good night.